For staff members, pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Plurk, please call the row.
Trustee Brewer, here.
Here.
Trustee Jones.
Here.
Trustee Tate.
Here.
And trustee Zupan. President.
We'll go right into the, um... Can I give one mic? All right, we'll go right into the approval of the minutes. Item number four, I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of December 12th, 2017.
So moved.
Second. It's moved by trustee Todd, second by trustee Jones. Any questions? Madam Plurk, please call the row.
Brewer?
Yes.
Grant?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Tate? Todd? Yes. Zupan?
No.
Motion is carried. Item B, I'll entertain a motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes for December 19th, 2017. I'll entertain the motion.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Todd.
I'll second it.
Any questions? Madam Plurk, please call the row.
Grant?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Tate?
Todd.
Todd?
Yes.
Zupan?
No.
Brewer?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Before we go into public comment, was there any questions, any rebuttals of any kind from any trustee in regards to the minutes? In other words, was there something on there that you didn't like so they can have them changed or then they'll be called back again? So if there is something that, um, at any given time that we vote minutes down, we need to inform the clerk what is the reason that we voted, what is the reason that you voted no, so she can correct those errors or whatever it may be in the minutes. This is just for a FYI in the future that they, she needs to know what it is that you didn't vote for. Item number five, public comment. All questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any topic of their choice and pertaining to the business of the village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak and may not engage in debate. Come up to the mic right at the podium and state your name.
My name is Renee Richardson. I'm only speaking on that I want to say to everybody here so they know why I'm saying what I'm saying. I would like to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, for doing what you told me that you would do. And I think that the situation was cleared up very fairly. Um, I want everybody here to know that we can approach him in ways that we probably never have and we haven't really given him a fair chance because we won't open up our mouths and talk. We're gonna have arguments and fuss and fights with the mayor on different issues, but I'm a person that is fair. I'm a union person. I worked for the state of Illinois for 33 years. I did my job, but I understand the things that he have in front of him that he has to do. And a lot of times, we look at people and just make judgments. I'm not like that. If you do something that, that needs to be done, I'll say thank you. Other people, I don't know how they handle situations, but it's not saying that we're not gonna argue and fuss and fight over village situations because I know that that will still happen. But I can say thank you from me. I don't know how many other people are having situations. They won't say anything about it, but I know that we're having a lot of situations as far as the water mains are concerned. Um, that will be brought to your attention. Um, we're having problems as far as, you know, um, streets and stuff like that. So, I mean, I just wanted to say thank you to you. I wanted to say thank you to Sherri also.
One minute.
I got your minute. But I just wanted to say thank you. And I wanted to say to everybody here in the audience, sometimes we think a person is one way, but if we don't speak up as an individual, we'll never know. So I think that maybe some of us may need to step back and take a second look at ourselves first and then deal with the situation as it need to be dealt with.
Thank you so much. Any other, okay. We'll run into report of the officers. I don't have to report. I let my, um, department heads take care of that part of it. I just wanted to make a comment. Um, this past week was a very, very trying week. Not this week, today's Tuesday, last week, I'm sorry, was a very trying week with the weather, with the snow. Uh, we've had a, you know, it was like Murphy's Law last week. Whatever could happen, happened. But I just wanted to publicly thank, um, the services that are here, the police and Public Works. Public Works had a trying time. A lot of times, you don't see what's behind the scenes, but along with all the snow, 'cause the snow seemed like every day for like four days, they also had a water main break and they were able to take care of that. Had a few phone calls, which you always will, and as far as the snow, and I'm sure there's been things going back and forth because I've talked to, um, a lot of residents either on the phone or in person about the snow plows. And I just wanted to explain one thing to everyone that has, that has a home here, living in a home, whatever. When a snowplow goes by, he doesn't, he, he's not, it's not that he's trying to put you or barge you, but there's no way for that snow, for him to stop at every driveway and go around. It's just impossible. So it's just, we try to, they do it in swipes. They don't try to come down and take half the snow on that street and push it at one time. That's why you see them go up and down the street, mainly they start in the middle, go up and down the street, so they don't have that much. You don't have a wall when you come out, but you will have a, a, a little, small mini wall because that's the way, that's the way you have to push the snow. So I just wanted to, I mean, if you've been out here for any length of time, you know that that's what happens. There's nothing against anybody, uh, it's not against any resident, but that's just the way you plow snow. And the second thing is, um, if you have a snow blower or you're pushing snow, try not to put it in the street because it's gonna come right back to you again when the snowplow goes by. So just, if you can't, I know it's kinda hard to throw it up high, but I'm just letting you know that it's, if it's in the street and they go by, it's gonna be back on the driveway again. So it's nothing that's, anyone's against anybody or, uh, picking on anyone, it's everywhere. And that's not just in South Village. If you go anywhere in town and anywhere that where it snows at, snow's got to go somewhere. So I just wanted to say that, so don't, it's not, don't, don't get mad at the people that are actually doing the snow plowing. But if you have a real serious problem with something else, always just give me a call. Uh, I'll come up to the village and I'll try to see what I can do. That being said, we'll go to reports from the village clerk, Mr. Marvin Cameron Brewer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna start talking about voter registration. It is that time of the season where voter registration and election process and the duties of the village clerk comes into play. So we do have voter registration going on Monday through Friday here at the village hall from 10 to 2, uh, each of those days, and then tonight, and then next Monday. We will keep the village hall open from 4:30 to 6:30 to accommodate those individuals who have to work but may need the services. In the back for the residents and up here for the trustees, I provided the key dates for the upcoming election on March 20th so that you would know, and if any of the residents were to ask you, you would have that information on hand. Um, let's see. I also put in the back the recycling schedule that was presented to you at the last meeting, so they are back there for anyone who would want to grab one. Again, I'm going to ask for bios and photos of all of the board members so that it can go on the website and we can complete that task and be finished with it. I wanna make an appeal for that PACE agreement because I did hear a little bit of unrest where the PACE agreement is concerned with us attempting to possibly, um, sell tickets for those who ride the PACE buses. Know that before bringing it to you, I did talk to the young ladies up front and they are okay with it. Um, they felt that it's really not going to take that much more out of their workday and it's not gonna increase their workload substantially. Uh, in fact, one of the persons that I talked to not only is interested in doing that, she also asked if she could become a notary so that she can provide those services. So as we talked about the PACE agreement, she starts, she mentioned again to me her desire to become a notary, so I don't think that it's going to overtax them very much. I've been using eBlast quite a bit and I'm still learning on it, so when you see that a line is not necessarily where it's supposed to be or whatever, just, you know, have some patience because the program does not come with a tutorial. So I'm learning this on my own and, and I'm doing my best not to send individual ones out, if you notice. I'm trying to send four or five different notices at one time. What I like about what's happening with that e-news along that line, we're striving to produce it twice a week instead of the newsletter quarterly, and, um, that's because we receive no ads. And so we promised that we would still get information out to residents, so that's the mechanism we're going to use. And what I like about the process now also is it automatically links to Facebook. So if you go on Facebook, you have an opportunity to read back over all of the other ones that may have come out prior to your necessarily being, uh, a part of the eBlast system. So let's use it and see how it works. We're really very close to a thousand people on Facebook at this point, so we're just still really wanting to get the word out. It was very essential to talk about the snow removal, to talk about, you know, parking, not parking, and they just seem to really love when they receive, uh, notices from the mayor. Um, trustee Beth Zupan, she presented information regarding her meeting and she got a hit from it. So, you know, let's utilize the processes that we have so that we can communicate to a greater degree with the residents in South Village. I gave the trustees this time a copy of the FOIA request. It's the one that was in your mailbox. It, there is no action item to it, but I thought that just as others give you reports, maybe this would be helpful. But I'm gonna read through this real quick because it's quite vast and I don't want to take up a lot of time. But on January the 11th, we received a request from Pet Couch. She wanted an audio recording of all of our board and committee meetings. On the 12th, Pet Couch sent another FOIA request. She asked for purchases, invoices for the new vehicles. She wanted the place of the purchase, et cetera, and she wanted to know how, another report asking for the re-due service contract. Those are the people that clean the village in our locations. And she wanted a background check of all of the employees. On the 16th, Ms. Couch also sent another request asking for the balance in the water and sewer, and she wanted documentation of the monies that were, that came from the TIF fund. Also on the 16th, Ms. Couch sent another one asking for time sheets for the vacation time for the economics director. She wanted the salary, the benefits, and the cost of those benefits. On the 25th of January, and I'm giving you these in the order that they come in, okay? On the 25th, Ms. Couch sent another follow-up response to the re-due contract because she believes that we renegotiated that contract, and so she wanted a revised one, but we do not have a revised one. But then she also compared that contract with some of the services from the HR invoices, so we responded to that as well. Then on the 29th, we had a reprieve and we got a request from SMY procurer. They give us a report made, I mean, they request a report just, it seems like twice a year, and they just really want our purchasing records. And so we have mastered getting them those records in the format that they want, so they're quite happy. On the 29th, we received one from the attorney general's office regarding a FOIA request that took place on December the 11th concerning BLRs. Um, the claim, it feels that we did not produce all of them, but I'm not able to determine, um, Director Weller, which ones were not given, so I've not responded back to that. On January the 30th, we received, uh, one for property liens, fines and violations, and then on the 31st, I received one from, uh, Dee Williams. He wanted extensive real estate inquiries, and most of those were denied as they were burdensome because he wanted to know every piece of real estate that is vacant here in the village, that that we own, how long that it's been, and just a whole plethora of other information, and we just could not accommodate that at that point. So we really just asked him to shorten, which is agreeable under the FOIA Act. On the 31st, we also received another one from Dee Williams. He wanted all of the codes, regulations, rules, et cetera. Um, that was denied too because it was too voluminous, and he has 10 days to shorten his request because it was not dated. So, you know, we go back to 1967, so there's no way that we could give him all of that, and plus it's, you know, a large volume. You know our code book that we have, how large it is, and we can't give that. Also, on the February the 1st, Dee Williams sent another one. He wanted a list of all of the fires in the village from 2013 to January 31st. He wanted the locations, the causes, the cost for them, the salaries for the firefighters who worked the fire. He wanted to know it by month. Um, and again, that was denied as well because it was too voluminous. On the 31st also, we received one from a Mr. Fitzgerald. He was requesting payoff information on some property. On the 2nd of February, we received one from Lisa of K5. She wanted all of the bid tabs and pay estimates for the 2017 MFT CDVG, um, proposals as well as for the largest center projects. On the 2nd of February, trustee Brewer submitted one. She wanted documentation for the movement of monies from the water fund to the TIF, and she wanted to show the authorization to move that money from TIF for. We were able to provide her the information on the authorization, and I did that by sharing your emails. On the 2nd of February, trustee Brewer also submitted a request for nine different items. If you look, you will see the items that she requested. She wanted the balance of the water fund, money owed to the water fund, inter-fund transfers, current balances. We answered those that we could. We definitely could not do number eight because she asked for the balance in TIF 5, and we do not have a TIF 5, so I had to deny that request. On the 2nd also, trustee Brewer sent one, a FOIA, asking for information regarding the reduction of pay of the finance director. That was denied as well because it was never discussed in open meeting. That was something that took place in executive closed session, and we are not authorized to share that information because we've not voted on it to approve that it will be, it can be released. Pet Couch sent a letter, and I'm not certain if it's a FOIA. I didn't receive it as a FOIA because she didn't say it was. However, it was about all of these unanswered FOIAs and her displeasure with some of the responses, but it was not necessarily a FOIA, even though all of her requests were filled. On the 6th of February, we received information from a young person who wanted, who's working on a survey project for workers' comp. We completed that as well. Then yesterday, we received one asking for property information. Also yesterday, we received a major one from E-Flood of Flood Company, and that one is ongoing. It just came yesterday. She wanted nine items relative to our contract with Republic. She wanted other data on solid waste prices and et cetera. And I'm looking at that last line, and it does have some errors in it, but this one is not for public publication, it's just for your benefit. Then today, we received one from NGM Law Office. Again, they wanted information on property liens, fines, violations, and flood information. And that brings us to February the 13th. Lord, let me have a reprieve tomorrow. And believe it or not, that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Plurk. Village engineer, Mr. Jim Zarnik.
Thank you, Mayor. In conjunction with cabinet and the public works department, we have begun preliminary design for replacing the failing water main that crosses I-394 to the west of 223rd Street and Cornell. This water main is critical for supplying water to the west side of the village. Plan is to install a new water main within a steel casing near where the existing crossing is and then abandon the existing water main in place. By the end of this month, we will have a preliminary cost estimate prepared along with an exhibit showing the proposed design. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Village treasurer, Mr. Judy Sefton.
Um, yes, Mayor. Uh, this week, we've launched the 2018 to 2019 budget planning process. We've done it with the department heads, launched it, and other key individuals. Um, prior to this week, we were planning for this, um, process, and that was in conjunction with, um, yourself, Mayor, as well as trustee Grant and, um, our head of human resources, Dr. Stroudor. Um, the budget process is gonna take several months to complete, um, and it will be a challenging process, but we've launched it to help ensure that we're gonna be, um, completed in a timely basis. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Department, I'm sorry, reports of departments, finance administration, Director Mo, Tom Rowell.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and the board. Uh, the TIF compliance report for all the tests will be filed with Illinois Comptroller's website pretty soon. The web portal is not up yet. It is, I believe it's going to be up by 20th of February. Once it is up and running, I'm gonna upload all the reports into the website. And the financials for the January 2018 will be ready soon. And also, um, the workers' comp audit has been scheduled for April at 3:00 PM. Once I am preparing for the workers' comp audit also, it's, it's a process for the evaluation of the premiums, whatever we have paid so far. It, it, it compares to actual versus budget. If the budgeted, uh, premium is less than the actual, they're gonna bill us for the remaining of the balance, so we may have to pay back to the insurance company. If we have overpaid by any chance, we are going to get the credit, either the credit or cash refund back. That ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, fire department chief, Al Starbray.
Thank you, Mayor and board. Over the period of January 19th through February the 9th, fire department responded to 32 calls, six fire alarms, 12 vehicle accidents, two mutual aids, five ambulance PD assist, two CO calls, one barbecue grill fire, one smoke in a building, two vehicle fires, and one gas leak. Oh no, number was rolling outside. Blessing. I would like to thank everyone for their prayers and well wishes while I was off. If you're feeling bad, don't wait around, get to that doctor. I'm speaking from experience. It's over the counter remedies, don't work in this kinda weather. I, I me waiting and waiting and waiting, I bypassed it through and went straight into pneumonia. And two weeks, and Oswald was not great. A reminder to check on your neighbors during this bad weather like we just had, and winter is still not over. And that is my report.
I just wanna say on behalf of myself and the board, we're glad to have you back. You look well, sound great. That's why I thought maybe you might've put that grill fire in there on purpose. But, uh, thank you so very much. Um, police department chief, Robert Kowalski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees. For the past two weeks, uh, we received 490 calls for service and had a total of 22 arrests. On a case of interest, January 24th, our officers along with the South Suburban Emergency Response Team executed a search warrant at a residence located on the 22500 block of Jeffrey. Officers developed information for the search that drugs were being sold from that location, subject that the residence was known to also have a gun in his possession and involved in other criminal activity. The search, uh, went well, proved positive for drugs along with a gun that was seized. Uh, in connection with, uh, information that led to that search, on January 25th, our officers along with the assistance of the South Chicago Heights Police Department and South Suburban Emergency Response Team executed a second search warrant in South Chicago Heights. That search also proved positive results for the offender who had multiple weapons and, uh, multiple drugs and cash in his residence. Both searches were successful and executed without incident. On January 25th, also on that same day, officers received a call of shots fired between two vehicles driving to South Village. Officers spotted a vehicle that matched the description of one of the vehicles. Witnesses said that they saw one vehicle shooting at the other, uh, and with the offending vehicle driving off. Officer found the vehicle, uh, unoccupied and towed it to be processed for evidence. No one's in custody at this time. All the officers were safe, and this matter was turned over to our investigative unit. On February 3rd, officers received a call of shots fired, 22100 block of Shirley. Upon arrival, officer found two individuals had been shot and deceased. Officers contacted our investigators and took another male who was living in residence into temporary custody. Also inside the house was another female and three children of the victim. The reported shooting incident was determined by the Cook County Medical Examiner to be a homicide-suicide. The Illinois State Police Crime Scene Investigators processed the scene. Children were, who were in the house at the time, were interviewed with social workers at La Ribida Park Forest. This matter is closed due to extraordinary circumstances. And on, uh, February 4th, officers responded to a report of a person shot and taken to St. Mark's Hospital. Incident occurred on the 2000 block of 218th Street where we've had, uh, several shootings in the past. The victim had non-life-threatening injuries and was taken to Stroger Hospital. The victim had non-life-threatening injuries and was taken to Stroger Hospital. Of course, the victim is not cooperating with the police, and this matter is ongoing. And trust me when I tell you, we are definitely investigating this matter. National Night Out, we've registered with the National Association of Town Watch for the 2018 National Night Out, set for August seventh, so mark your calendars, August seventh of this year. I, along with the mayor and the fire chief, would like this year's event to be even bigger and better than the ones in the past. If you'd like to volunteer or if you have any suggestions, please feel free to email me at saukvillagepd, that's all one word, S-A-U-K-V-I-L-L-A-G-E-P-D at gmail dot com. You can also message me on Facebook on our South Village Police page, or you can call me direct at seven oh eight, seven five three, five one five one, and most of you here know my number anyway. So we're looking at making it bigger and better. Prescription drug drop-off, you guys will be hearing this at every board meeting, but this is a reminder that the quarterly DEA prescription drug drop-off will be held again in April, April twenty-eighth, between eight and three, in the lobby of the South Village Police. We're asking that anyone who would like to dispose of their unwanted prescription drugs, feel free to do so at this opportunity. And please feel free to tell your neighbors and friends who live in surrounding suburbs, we will be a collection site for this area. And that'll end my report.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chief. Emergency Management Agency Director, Alan Vavri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the board. In conjunction with the Fire Department, the assisted calls, we, on March eighth, our next SMART meeting is going to be in Orland Hills, March eighth. It'll be at seven o'clock. March thirteenth, we're going to be, my department's going to be out in Beecher. It's going to be on a Tuesday night from six to ten for a federal, federal class for TIM's Traffic Incident Management Class. It's sponsored by the state. It's no cost to the village, so we'll be out there doing that. There is four-hour class. We will get certified. We will get a certificate to keep with us at all times. Also too, I'm not a weatherman, but the weather that's been passed along to me is that Wednesday and Thursday, we're expecting anywhere from fifty to eighty percent chance of rain, so a lot of the snow is going to start melting, so, you know, make sure that your subpumps are working, if you have a subpump. You know, the drains in front of your house are clear. Help out Public Works. Saturday, there's forty to fifty percent chance of more snow coming in, and then Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, sixty percent chance of rain. So we got a lot of wet rain coming in for us, but we got one snow day coming in. Also too, is we're still actively looking for members to join my department. It is a paid-on-call department. We are on-call twenty-four hours, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We go out at any given time to assist the police, fire department, assist other agencies as far as Cook County with any disasters or anything of that nature. At that time, that concludes my report, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works Director, Mr. Kevin Weller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to point out a couple issues with water. We had a water main upgrade at 219 Merrill, twenty-six feet of water main. This is one of the first breaks that we had in the cold weather break that we had. This just extended out a little bit differently because some of the other ones became more emergencies to repair, so this is why it was so far pushed off. We also in this process here, because we had the main shut down at the time, we did replace the fire hydrant located at 2005, 223 Third Street. We had a boiler that was on both of these locations. Both boilers were lifted. All residents that were affected were notified through each, passed out to each home. The next upgrade that we're working on, the mayor had made mention, we had a water main break prior to the giant snow events we started here. That was over on 223rd Place, 2116 and 2100, 223rd Place. We start off with a water main break. We charged the main, created another water main break under the curb about ten feet off the fire hydrant. So temporarily right now, that main is bandied together, but we have a project starting in probably Monday. We'll be replacing twenty-six foot of water main over there and also replacing the hydrant at the end of the street. Boilers will be put, passed out to each resident that will be affected and then lifted as it will, as it's come lifted from the land. Also in the snow events, staff has responded to six snow events, basically six, basically I was more like ten days in a row, but it was every other day we had locations roughly about eighteen inches. And as the mayor said, as we push the snow back off the curway here, it does accumulate more and higher on the curb, and some curbs it's over two feet, some even higher than that, just depending on the streets and the size of the streets. During the event, we did have some malfunction, malfunctions with some, from our vehicles. We do have ten vehicles, which two of them are left as extra vehicles, so those vehicles only get used in emergencies because they're our oldest vehicles, but they still do work. But we had six of our vehicles that had some malfunction of some sort, whether it was hydraulic hoses, heaters, welds, a bunch of different things. The snow was very wet. It caused us windshield wiper problems when it accumulated on the windshields. So we do have some of those issues that we're working on currently right now, some are parts that we have ordered out, and some are the vendors that we're waiting on for some quotes to do the repairs. Hopefully, they'll be all repaired by any major event we have, but we have enough vehicles at this point to at least continue if we did have a snow event. Also, we have been called to a few more homes with some frozen pipes or some leaks coming out of the houses. Some of these will happen after the thaw happens. The pipes are frozen during the frost and the freeze, and everything thaws out. Snow tends to have more heat in the air, especially when the sun comes out, so these pipes will start to leak. So we do go to these locations and shut the water off. Sometimes there's people in the homes, sometimes there's not. If anybody ever comes to a house that they own, rent a home, and they show, see that the water's off, just call the village hall. They'll be able to let you know the condition of what it's in. Also, staff completed our shut-off list on the, I believe, the south side, and we just replete, we had to go back over all the ones we shut off, and we did have all those turned back on at this time. We are ongoing with our jet and dig list. Due to the weather conditions now, it'll be put off a little bit because the parkways are so full of snow, there's a little more involved. As of this week, Thursday, we do have another shut-off list starting. It'll be the north side, and we'll start on that, and we'll complete it as, as we move through the week of the following week. The pothole conditions I reported on the last meeting, we won't be able to do very much of that with the weather conditions we have here. When everything melts, we are definitely going to have more problems on the streets with the potholes. Residents can just call the village hall and let them know the address where there's a complaint, and we'll try to address them temporarily or do something with them by adding stone if we have to. As of this year, we've ordered one hundred ton of our three hundred ton salt allotment. I am placing an order for a hundred ton now due to the storm event. We've cut through our one hundred ton quite fast, but we still have more to order if we need. Let's see here. We're also working on finalization of the Ozlin grant for our ballfields. Some of the work we're waiting on right now to complete is the public works portion of that. We're going to try to assist as much as possible to cut any of the costs, so we make sure we get all that completed. And finally, during some of the events recently, we've come across a couple leaks within our pump houses and our air stripper buildings. We have plastic pipe in there. Due to expansion attraction and the machines moving, we do have some leaks going on, so we're working on a couple vendors right now to do some plastic welding and process. So once we get that, we'll turn those quotes in, and we'll start the work. Nothing that's going to cause the system not to work, but there's some drips that we want to make sure we take care of. And the final thought is, all the snow load that's on all the houses right now, everything is melting. There tends to be a lot of icicles hanging off the houses. They're very hazardous, so everybody just watch out for your neighbors, watch out for yourselves, watch out for the employees. When you go buy houses or any overhangs, the ice can be very dangerous. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Community Development Director, Sherry Jezeski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Night court call for February seventh, we had a hundred and thirty tickets on the court docket. Fifteen were found guilty, six were found not guilty, a hundred and nine were found guilty and defaulted for failure to appear, and fines were assessed at seven hundred and fifty dollars each. Six additional liens were filed this week. Current outstanding liens to date equal a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. Paid liens to date are a hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Economic Development Director, Joseph Wizwati?
Good evening. Very pleased to report that the village will be receiving assistance through Cook County for engineering to expand rail spur access into the logistics center, as well as extending Windpack Way. Cook County recognizes that both rail and road access will be needed to stimulate private investment within the logistics center. I want to thank the staff of Cook County Board President, Tony Preckwinkle, including Mike Jazzo, Susan Campbell, Mohamed Elie, Tom, or Dominic Tucci, John Yonin, Maria Urban, and Mayor Derek Burgess, for all their efforts in making this happen. In addition, Cook County is committed to assisting the village with geotechnical and environmental services for village-owned land within the industrial park. Through the efforts of all involved, this will save the village taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars that we simply do not have now to get the work done and properly market the logistics center nationwide to other supply chain management developers. We held a meeting with the consultants who have presented proposals for the village's comprehensive plan. Those were Houssail Levine Associates and Tesco Associates. These two consultants are very well-qualified with impeccable reputations in the region and outstanding performance. Our interview process of those consultants will begin this Thursday, and we will have recommendations for the CMAP board to approve following those interviews. While CMAP approved this project, the cost was not determined. However, it is estimated between a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and seventy-five thousand for the plan. Those costs can go up to two hundred thousand dollar range depending on how complex the plan becomes. I also want to thank Advocate Healthcare for a great inaugural Business After Hours event we had two weeks ago. We have received positive feedback from many businesses, a few of which have decided they wanted to host at their location. Tonight, the board has before it for approval and ordinance annexing property, which was gifted to the village in December. The annexation includes fifty-nine point nine acres, and the entire parcel gifted consisted of sixty-seven point nine. And finally, I'd like to just welcome back Stoffey. That concludes my report, sir.
Thank you. Reports of trustees and their standing committees. Public Service Committee Trustee, Bernice Brewer?
Uh, you're next. Ask a question to Joe.
I'm sorry.
I need to ask a question for Joe. To Joe.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Did you, did you give us the restricted covenants? I didn't, I don't have it in my package.
You're talking about the, for the property that we?
Yeah. You said you was going to give us mine.
It wasn't in the, the package?
I don't, I don't have mine.
Okay. I will make sure you get a copy of those. Those are, those, the restrictive covenants were the covenants that apply to the original developer, though, just so you know. So there are no other restricted covenants. There are restrictions of use, though.
But you said you.
Right, and I will leave a copy of that for you.
Is that it?
Yes.
Budget and Finance Committee Trustee, Roger Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last month, the committee did meet, went over financials for month ending December, also went over agent report. The next meeting will be next Wednesday here in the Rotunda at seven o'clock. That's all I have.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation and Youth Services Trustee, Calvin Jones?
Basketball is still ongoing, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, from three to six. Open Gym is always the last Saturday of the month. That will be the twenty-fourth of this month, eleven a.m. to two-thirty p.m. Easter egg stuffing and Easter basket making. That'll be Good Friday, starting at ten a.m. until we finish. And the Easter egg hunt is Saturday, March thirty-first, starting sharp, noon, starting at noon sharply. Don't be late. And that concludes my report.
Okay, Housing and Governmental Relations Trustee Cecil Tate? Ordinance Review Committee Trustee Linda Ty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next meeting for the Ordinance Review Committee will be March eighth, six-thirty p.m. here in the Rotunda. That ends my report.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee Trustee Beth Supan?
Our committee met last week. It was a pretty productive meeting. We had a few members, or members of the public join us. I'm hoping they decide to come back and actually participate on an ongoing basis because it was good to have some new faces and perspectives. And I thought it was a good, good conversation about a lot of different ideas that we've got for some public forums going forward, including National Night Out, so we're getting a jumpstart on that for this, this summer, among other things. And then our next meeting would be the first Wednesday of next month, which is March seventh, six p.m. here at Village Hall in the Rotunda. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Reports of committees and commissions. Beautification Committee Chairman, Trustee Linda Ty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report at this time.
Senior Advisory Council Chairman, Mr. Emmett Farmer? I thought I saw him. Okay, well, I don't really don't have a report.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, the senior center held our monthly meeting on, last Thursday, and pretty much we went over our calendar. We did give the mayor a copy of our calendar. We've got a lot of events, pretty much scheduled, and pretty much all the events that's already are in place have been doing pretty well. Our game night, which is midwest, is the first and third Fridays, that's been doing good. And we have ceramics that goes on every Wednesday. One of the new groups, the Leisure Tire starts, this, fact starts tomorrow, and they do every second and fourth Wednesday. And we've got Bluegrass that does every second and fourth Sunday. And what we like to do is, also, we got a travel seminar coming up on the seventeenth. And our regular ones, I think I referred last time, was the one for Linda Washington. Only thing that changed time, it's still the second Monday, but they changed times from six to eight on that. That's the South Village for informative dialogue. And then the one on the second and fourth Friday, Julian Cowan helping our people elevate. She hasn't really, really been doing anything yet, and we're gonna, I guess, see if she's gonna continue with that schedule there. And we're just asking everyone, you know, to support, you know, the events that go on and especially tell the seniors, you know. You know, we discussed that at our meeting last Thursday, like, you know, ceramics, you know, seniors should be able to come out and enjoy that or learn that. Hopefully, we're gonna have some more things like that. I think they got like a jewelry, where they can make jewelry, and they can crochet and knit, things like that, you know, just events that seniors can come out and participate in. So hopefully, they'll come. We are gonna start a health fair Thursdays in March, and it'll be every fourth Thursday. And then on the two, on the second Tuesday, we're gonna start our Information Tuesday, where we're gonna have someone comes out and see, that's gonna be from like ten to eleven. We're gonna have a luncheon, and right now, they're trying to propose to have bingo on that day, too. So we, like I said, got a lot of activities, like you all kind of just to spread the word and let the seniors know things are going on at the senior center, and we like them to, you know, come out and participate. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Okay, New Business, I'll accept a motion for accounts payable for the February thirteenth. Okay, New Business, I'll accept a motion for accounts payable for the February 13th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Supan. Any questions?
Question. Mr. Mayor, I noticed on here that Republic Service, we paying the invoice from December 31st, so isn't that, that's two months behind? We're two months behind in the garbage bill, or what it says, January, I mean, December 31st, so are we one month or two months behind?
Well, we always pay every other month because we don't collect the full amount until two months. We bill half the village one month and the other half the second month, and then by that, going to that third month, really, is when we get all our money, so we can pay them. So yes, there's always too much behind.
So we're two months behind, is that why? And also, on here, on the accounts receivable, I've asked...
Accounts receivable?
Accounts payable.
Okay.
I've asked for some kind of guidance from the attorney to address how we're paying Dr. Strata for Personnel Services, and then we paying her for negotiations for a union contract. I don't know why it's, I just can't get that information. It's just a matter of them addressing the issue, is she definitely paying or not? I just want to know. And I've asked and asked for that information. I mean, we got O1's group we paying HR services for, then we paying her for negotiation, and it seems like she's doing HR services, too, on that one. And then she goes back here and she's doing, I guess this is union negotiation, then she doing arbitration. So is she doing all this on the same day or doing all this at one time? I'd just like the attorneys to address how we could be paying her for doing, you know, this kind of work. I mean, it might be legal, I don't know. I'd just like the, again, I'm gonna re-ask that again. I'm just gonna ask for the information. I, you know, not quite sure if this is right here. And that's what the attorneys for, to guide us into situations like that. So I would like the information from the attorney.
Is that it?
What's the matter, Sheriff?
Pardon me? I'm just on this motion. That's what I'm asking for, motion for accounts payable. Is that the only objection or question you had on that?
No, I wanted to know if I'm gonna get that information from the attorneys.
You asking me if you're gonna get the information from attorneys, or you asking me, can't you ask the attorney? Because...
I mean, I could call, because you always told us that we...
Yes, that's what I said, are you asking...
I mean, I could call myself, but I mean...
I'm asking you, are you asking me to contact, I can give you the answer. First of all, if we ask attorneys anything, they're gonna charge. Second of all, the reason why we're using, as I stated before, her to, her being Dr. Strata, to our negotiations and doing this contract part of the negotiations for FOP, to get everything together, because it's half the amount that if we went to the lawyers. That's number one. If she qualified, I stated that before. Yes, she is. I told you what she did before. So to bring, for whatever reason, this is going back and forth, I have no idea, because I gave you that information when we were in the executive session. I told you where was her, what she done before. There was nothing, there was no questions then. But as far as asking the lawyers, if you want to spend that money, by all means, give them a call. I don't know what they're gonna tell you, but if you feel that you need to hear it from them at that price of what they're gonna charge, fine, you'll just be on accounts payable to pay that.
Which attorney?
Pardon me?
Which attorney?
You can ask, we have two sets, we have two attorneys.
So who should I call?
That can't give you that information. That's up to you, whatever, when you feel that you want to listen to, but just let you know that when you do call them, the clock starts. Their call starts right in and there, so. But I gave you the answer, I don't know whatever answer they can give you in regards to that. And then the other questions on the accounts payable that we have a motion on the floor for. Madam Plurgh, please call the roll.
Trustee Jones.
No.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Supan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
No.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I entertain a motion to approve the resolution, BLR 14220, resolution for the maintenance of streets and highways by the municipality. We talked about this last week.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Supan, second by trustee Todd. Any questions? Madam Plurgh, please call the roll.
Tate. Todd.
Yes.
Supan.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve the maintenance engineering to be performed by our consulting engineers. This also was discussed last week. You have that in front of you? I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Todd, I'm sorry, trustee Supan, second by trustee Todd. Any questions? Madam Plurgh.
Todd.
Yes.
Supan.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Tate.
Motion carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve an ordinance annexing the property commonly known as the Salt Trail Wetlands.
So moved. Second.
It was moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Supan. Any questions?
Question?
Yes.
Comment? I really would like a copy of that comment.
I will have those three tomorrow.
Okay, all right. End of my comment.
There's restricted covenants. She wants a copy.
Madam Plurgh.
Supan.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Tate. Todd.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll accept the motion to approve the agreement between Pace, the South Suburban Bus, I'm sorry, the Suburban Bus Division of the RTA, and the Village of Salt Village to be a ticket agent.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Todd. Any questions?
Question?
Yes.
Did we get the agreement?
Did you get the...
It wasn't in Winnipeg, sorry.
It's the same, it's the same one we had last week.
Same one?
Yes, same one we had last week.
Thank you.
Any other question?
I got a question. Did we have to come up with the money first, or we just gonna get the tickets and sell them and then reimburse the Pace? Did we have to come up with the money first?
Yes, we have to. We get the tickets, yes. Do we have to pay it ahead of time? There's nothing in here that says that.
That's my question.
No.
No. They will invoice us with the expectation that, you know, after it's sold, we would pay them naturally and then place another order if it's successful and everything. But we don't have to put up the money upfront.
Any other question? Madam Plurgh.
Brewer.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Tate. Todd.
Yes.
Supan.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Comments from the Board of Trustees, starting with trustee Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a comment that I want to make. Last week, you had, you were talking about our finance when it came to us going to transfer money, and that we had a year to pay this back. Well, when it comes to restricted funds, I'm not comfortable with moving it out. What I think should have happened was with this particular restricted fund, that I would like to see in writing from Kane and McKenna, that we can borrow from that, and we have one year to pay it back. I believe in paying our employees, but sometimes decisions are kind of hard because I had to look at, can we get, how can we get this paid back? We know that we're in a financial crunch, but I was wondering if we could get something in writing that we have one year to pay that back. The other thing that I would like to see happen, when we're transferring money from one account to another, when the money is getting paid back, I feel that we should be notified that it's being paid back. Send an email, we're moving this much money back into this account. But I just wanted to let everyone know that I am an advocate in paying our employees, but sometimes I'm not comfortable with the decision. It was a very hard decision, but that's what I would like to see happen. And that ends my comment.
Thank you, and you will.
Thank you.
Trustee Brewer.
I'm piggybacking on what trustee Todd says. I'm really uncomfortable with saying no for the accounts payable, but since we've been in office, money has been moved, trustees don't know about it, and we need to know what's going on and what's the balance on the account. Now, I had a long conversation with the treasurer, and she was talking about their entries not being made, the account balance is not right, and that's something I've been saying all the time, something's off with this accounts payable. Now, every time we vote on accounts payable, I would like to see that if we're taking money out of a count, that, okay, say for instance, this is hypothetical, that maybe if we're taking $200,000 out of the water fund, all that money's not coming out of the water fund. Some of it is coming out of DEA or the CNN fund. I'd like it to be broken down and say, you know, what account is being paid from. And not only that, I would like the balance of each account that the money's being taken from. The money changes every time we get payroll, every time we do payroll, and we should know the balance on each account that we're taking money from. Now, I also, at the discussions with the Madam Treasurer, she's talking about all the kinds of ways that we could save and change the way we're doing things, and I would like to see the balance every week that we have on these different funds that we borrow money from. Now, in response to a form request I asked about the balance of water fund and the inter-fund transfer, that's old news. Those figures have changed since then. And also, I also asked for the information regarding the reduction in pay for the finance director. I know we talked about it back in the back, but we're supposed to talk about finance out here in public, as I understand it. So my question is, I don't know what, there's no transparency here, we're not getting what we need, because she, according to the treasurer, the treasurer, the accounting data is off, you know, so you got to understand, we asking questions so the residents could sort of understand what's going on here. We don't understand it, and how can they understand it? And they're using their tax dollars to get the answer for them. Now, as far as this $250,000 that was moved from the water fund, there's no way you shouldn't have any information about why that money was moved. Somebody moved it, it wasn't the trustees. We should have somebody, but they denied that request. I'm gonna send it to the PAC, but that's impossible for you to move money, and nobody knew about it, and nobody authorized somebody to move the money. What is the trustees' liability for that? Money's been moved and we're not saying anything? I don't understand that. So we need to know what's going on with the balances, when money's being moved, when money's being paid back, you know, and what fund is coming out of. It's as simple as that. That's the end of my comment.
First of all, I will not discuss personnel matters out in public, number one. I did inform you at the executive session why I did, and why I did what I did. I don't know why you didn't hear it, everybody else did. And you're saying that transparency or whatever, in case somebody's moving something or whatever, that's up to you. If you feel that way, then you're supposed to do exactly what you said that you wanted to do. So I'm not going to discuss personnel matters in public, that will not happen, and I said that before. That being said, I hope that one day I can get a report from the public services, that the committee that you were on back in May, that I asked you to be in charge of, and I haven't got anything yet, so that people can find out what it takes and how much money it's gonna take to get Lake Michigan water. Trustee Tate.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Tate.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm not going back and...
Mr. Mayor, you gonna sit up there and try to undermine me and not let me respond? You're not gonna ever get a report for that public service.
It's not a response, it's not a response. I gave you, Mike, I gave you...
Because every time we get water fund money, you use it as soon as we get it. So how in the world can I determine how much fund we get? We have got in $1.5 million since May. We can't account for all that money, and you're gonna ask me to give you suggestions about raising water rates, when you don't even know what happened to the water money that's here? Can somebody tell me what happened to the $250,000? Then we can talk about public service. So I mean, let's be for real. Here, you're not gonna put that on me. You cannot tell anybody to raise the water rates when you have used their money and you can't account for it. That's not fair to anybody. I am more than willing to look into that once I find out what, where the money is. And that's what we need to know, where the money is.
Trustee Tate, see everything? Trustee Jones.
Even though it's not snowing out, I just want everyone to be careful in the mornings, especially, especially around yellow freight company there, that when the snow blows off the top of those trucks and it hit that somewhat moist ground, instantly turns into ice. I had less problems going to work Friday during the snow. It only took me maybe an hour to get all the way to Midway from here, which wasn't bad at all, because there was no traffic, but Monday and today, it was just ice everywhere. I mean, so even though it's not snowing out there, be very, very careful. And Happy Valentine's Day to everyone.
Thank you.
That's it.
Trustee Supan.
Yes, thank you.
Trustee Grant.
I just want to make a quick comment to trustee Brewer, that Moana does provide us with this sheet every two weeks, usually on the day of accounts payable, of the balances of each fund that we have, and I'm sure he can write a weekly if you request it, but every two weeks he does give...
I request it, I can.
Okay, you just said you didn't have the balance of the funds, and I understand this is, this is it.
I got it today. What about other days? I mean, but still, does it explain where that $250,000 went?
I mean, it's just a snapshot in time, as of today, but...
I know, I know.
Okay, that's all I have.
I just want to wish everyone Happy Valentine's Day. Don't forget tomorrow, as was stated, that is Valentine's Day, so please don't forget that date. And be careful, it's gonna warm up the next few days. Don't let that little bit fool you, because that water's gonna turn into ice by the weekend, so kind of be careful, and that's what stated before. If you have a sun pump, make sure that it's stalled out, because it will back up if you don't have that sun pump opened up. I'll entertain a motion to the jury.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Supan, second by trustee Todd. Madam Plurgh. All in favor?
Aye.
Posits? Thank you very much.